All right, it's 7 o'clock, so we're going to start this meeting. We're going to begin with a roll call vote.
Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Here.
Mr. Updugrove?
Here.
Mr. Hemingway?
Here.
Ms. Duroff?
Present.
Ms. Hogan?
Present.
Mrs. Denon?
Here.
Mr. Brophy?
Here.
Mr. Foose?
Here.
All right, please join us now for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with every and just one.
All right, the first item that we have is announcement of previous executive session. So the board met, do we have a date for this? Yeah. The board met on the 26th for approximately 40 minutes regarding personnel. Now we will move to public comment period one. Has anybody, has anybody signed up? All right, moving right along. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for November 26th. Denon moves, McWhorter second. We'll do that by roll call vote. Apologies, yes, questions or comments on the minutes? Ms. Nyman?
Yes, the minutes are incorrect as it was stated in the minutes. That, um, hold on. Under board comments. That Mrs. Denon thanked and commented each of the departing board members, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Breece, Mr. Elsie, or Mr. Lewis, and Mrs. Yu Savage. That is totally incorrect. She never thanked Mr. Breece.
We can correct that.
All right, are there any other comments or questions on the minutes? And so we'll proceed pending that update, that correction. So we'll move ahead with the roll call vote.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway? Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item we have is the report of the President. So this evening I just wanted to read an excerpt from an email that I sent the board recently where announcing the committee assignments. So I'd first like to express my gratitude for everyone's interest. My decisions were based on interest as well as my perception of abilities to work with administration, communicate, and facilitate a meeting. I have a great deal of optimism for several reasons. First, there was ample interest in chairing these committees. I heard from just about every board member. My hope is that this carries over into active engagement and participation at our committee meetings. To chair a committee is to serve as a facilitator. We all retain the ability to suggest topics pursuant to Policy 006, and we all have our individual votes to cast. Second, between leadership, committee chairs, and BCTC roles, seven board members of our nine have additional responsibilities. And again, my hope is that this will drive collaboration and active engagement. At the meeting on the 26th, Mr. Updugrove and Ms. Nyman were selected as our BCTC representative and alternate. And now for our committee chairs, chairing the Education, Technology, and Student Services Committee will be Ms. Hogan. Chairing the Finance, Facilities, and Operations Committee will be Mrs. Denon. And chairing the Human Resources Policy and Parent Community Intergovernmental Committee will be Mr. Hemingway. So we already had our first Finance, Facilities, and Operations Committees, so thank you, Ms. Denon, for stepping into that right away. And the rest of the chairs will be working with their administrative liaisons for the committees going forward. And that is all I have for the President's report. Next we will move to the financial reports. And we have the Food Service and Treasurer's Reports this evening.
Hello. This evening, I wanted to reference for the month of October, the revenues and expenditures. I wanted to highlight for the month of October, the local revenues were approximately 3.1 million. 1.7 million consisted of local tax collections. 1.1 million was earned income tax. State revenues was approximately 4.2 million. 2.2 million was basic education funding. 882,000 approximated with property tax relief. Approximately 632,000 transportation subsidy. 428,000 rental reimbursement. And I'll follow with the revenue, that the federal revenue was approximately 49,000, which was for Title I. The expenditures for the month of October, the salaries and benefits was approximately 6.4 million, which corresponds with about 61% of the budget in salaries and benefits. And followed up with debt service payments, which was due November 1st, which was paid in the last week of October. And that pretty much comes to an end for my highlights of the revenues and expenditures.
All right, then we need a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report. Ms. Denon moves, do I have a second? Ms. Hogan? Move to a roll call vote. Sorry. Are there any questions or comments on the Treasurer's Report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
No.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy? Mr. Brophy, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-2.
Thank you. The next item we have is the Secretary's Report.
No report.
Next item is the Solicitor's Report.
No report.
The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
No report.
Now we will move to the Consent Agenda. On the Consent Agenda, this evening we have the Middle School West Change Order, the 2020 Census Enumerator, and Approval of Compensation, the Collaborative Procurement of Food. And those are the items on tonight's Consent Agenda.
Mr. President, the Administration would like to present to the Board, request approval and acceptance of the Consent Agenda.
Ms. Hogan, motion? Mrs. McWhorter, second. Any comments or questions, or no, sorry, for the Consent Agenda, we move right to the vote. So we'll move to roll call vote for that.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway? Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries 9-0.
Now we will move to the itemized agenda.
Mr. President, board members, at this time we'd like to have for your presentation the report, the draft audit report by Barbicane Thornton and Company.
Good evening, thank you all for having me out here. My name is Jeff Kowalszak, and I'm a partner with Barbicane Thornton and Company. And I'm delighted to be here this evening to present the results of our audit for the year ended June 30, 2019. The document you have in front of you is in draft format, but upon your acceptance, we're prepared to finalize and issue the report to ensure compliance with all continuing disclosure and other legal and regulatory requirements. So I know it's a very large document, and there's just a couple pages I want to bring you to, to walk you through a couple things that I think are of utmost importance. And then I'd like to open it up for any questions you may have about the audit process or about the results. So the first page I want to bring you to is actually at the back of the document. It is page 73, which is the schedule of the summary of auditor's results. Now, you're a district that receives over $750,000 worth of funds that originate at the federal government, primarily your child nutrition cluster, your special education funding, as well as some title money. And because of that, not only do you undergo a financial audit, but you also undergo a compliance audit over your major federal programs, which are identified based on your largest federal programs on a rotating basis. So for this year, the major federal program that we looked at was your special education cluster. That's IDEA. And the schedule of findings that you'll see in front of you identifies a lot of things that say no. And that means we did not identify any material weaknesses, any significant deficiencies, or any noncompliance with your major federal program or with internal controls over financial reporting. We're issuing what are called clean or unmodified audit opinions. And also, you'll see at the bottom, we do have one yes checked off, and that's where you're identified as a low-risk auditee. So that means not only did you not have any material weaknesses this year, but for the last two years, you've not had any material weaknesses, and you have filed timely. This was a year where there was a lot of turnover during the year and subsequent to the year in the business office. So that is a year where we often see if something's going to go wrong and things are going to fall through the cracks and controls will be skipped or missed, that's often a time where we see that. So I'm really pleased to be able to come here tonight and let you know that not only did we not identify material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, but we didn't identify any degradation or lapses in the internal controls over finances and over financial reporting. So I think that's something I wanted to highlight because whenever there's turnover, that's always a concern. And I wanted to make sure that you were aware that our audit did not identify any issues in that area. We're about five and a half months into the following year, so I try not to go too much detail into the numbers, but I did want to highlight a couple things. And the first is on page 19. And this is your general fund budgetary comparison. So this looks at your budget for the year versus your actual for the results on the same basis that you budget on. And the financial statements report your numbers in two different ways. One is the near-term focus, which is what you budget on, where we only look at expenditures actually paid or to be paid in the near term, and revenues that have been earned and are available for your use in the near term. So this does not include things like your buildings and equipment, which are capitalized and recorded as assets in the other basis. And it doesn't include your long-term debt, except for any current year payments or issuances. So looking at your budgetary basis, your total revenues, you exceeded budget by about $490,000, which on your size budget, $117 million entity, that's 0.4%. So your revenues were at 100.4% of your budget. And on the expenditure side, you were at 98.7% of your expenditure budget. So that led to a result where for the year you had anticipated your fund balance decreasing by an amount equal to about eight tenths of a percent of expenditures, of your annual expenditures, and you actually increased by that amount. So you ended the year with about $8 million in unassigned fund balance in your general fund, which is about 6% to 7% of your annual expenditures. I also wanted to highlight for the newer board members who may not have looked at these financial statements in prior years, that in addition to the budgetary basis, we also opine on the full accrual basis, which lists all of your organization's assets and liabilities, whether they're near term or long term. And page 13 is the statement of net position. And the reason I want to highlight this is about five years ago, there was a new requirement that the district and all districts in Pennsylvania were required to show their portion of the net pension liability of the Peasars Pension Plan. So currently, the Peasars Pension Plan is actuarially calculated to be 54% funded. So that 46% that's not funded, each district has to pick up a portion of that liability. Your district's share of that liability was $187 million as of June 30, 2019. And I bring that up because that's a liability that you're required, under the Government Accounting Standards Board, to account for, but you're not legally able to do anything about it. Peasars doesn't let you sort of create your own funding mechanism, even if you wanted to. And the result of that $187 million liability is that it shows a deficit, an unrestricted deficit of $158 million. So I wanted to highlight that if you're looking at this for the first time, you may see a huge deficit and say, what's going on? That deficit is more than accounted for by the net pension liability. And Peasars has taken steps over the last 24 months, really, to start making major changes to the plan that are going to, in the next three to five years, start to have an impact on that funded percentage. They have started, they've changed over the plans effective July 1 this year, so that new hires have a defined benefit, a defined contribution or a hybrid plan, which offers different benefits that actuarially are less costly. But the employer contribution rate is currently staying the same for employees, whether they are in these new plans or not. So that is going to have a significant impact on reducing this liability eventually. It's still going to take a few years for that to really cycle in, but I wanted to make you all aware of that liability and sort of what we have seen happening. At this point, I'd like to open it up to any questions that anybody may have on the statements, on the audit process, or on anything that I might be able to opine on.
Mrs. Denon?
I really don't have a question, but I just wanted to commend our business office because I know it is really, really difficult, and we have had such incredible turnover. Someone who was here for 20-plus years, to then someone who came in for a year and a half, and then somebody else who came in for a year, and then finally, Mrs. Pitts. So I just really want to thank the Administration and especially Mrs. Pitts for really coming in and getting this all together for us, because I agree with you, it's very unusual that we would still have such a good audit with the amount of turnover we did. So I just want to say thank you to our business office.
Mrs. Nyman?
I'm hoping, now that you're here, Mrs. Pitts, that we can go back to having the comprehensive part of this, because it's a big help.
And I agree with you that it's an excellent tool. I will say that right now, the workload is incredible, and I would like to not do the CAFR for the '18, '19 year, but I do really want to get back to it for the '19, '20 year. It is excellent information to share with our community.
It is excellent information, and when I look back over the ones that we've had before, it was a major help. So if we can go back to that, I would...
That is definitely our goal.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, thank you very much for having us out here, and thank you for putting your trust in us. I wish you all a wonderful holiday season. And I always tell people, we audit governments year-round, so if at any point during the year you have a question about the district, about an accounting transaction, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm always happy to be of any assistance I can. Thank you.
So we need a motion to bring this to a vote to accept. Ms. Nyman, second. Ms. Hogan? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Nyman? Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Duroff? Ms. Hogan? Mrs. Denon? Oh, they're not working.
Yes.
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 Motion carries 9-0.
The next item on the itemized agenda is the presentation, requested board approve the following personnel actions. You have for resignations, three professionals, excuse me, two professional staff and one classified staff. For substitutes, we have five substitute positions. And change of employment status, four professional staff and one classified. For family medical leave and leave of absences, eight professional staff, one classified. Uncompensated leave, request approval for one professional staff. And then also, the appointment of one mentor teacher is presented to the board in the agenda. Request your approval, personnel actions.
So we need a motion for this, for personnel?
So can I ask a question on that?
After the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a second? Ms. McWhorter? So any comments or questions on personnel? Mr. Brophy?
Okay, the only thing I ask is on the, we have a thing on there for the mentor and the mentor rate. It says, just says $650, so is that per hour, per day, per month, per year? I'd just like to see that it's designated on what it actually is. I'm sure it's per year, but I'd like to see that on there so it's clarified.
Okay, thank you.
Did you hear that, Dr. Kim? Okay.
Okay, we'll move to the vote.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Ms. Hogan? Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
Next item on the agenda is old business.
No old business.
Next on the agenda is public comment period number two. Does anybody sign up? All right, nobody has signed up for public comment number two, so we will move to board comments. Does anybody have any board comments this evening? Mrs. Duroff?
I have a request from the Administration, copies of whatever they filed or will be filing for the closure of Pine Fordwood PDE.
That pack and a letter, we can put your copy in your weekly report.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Nyman?
I know I asked this before, but I'm going to ask it again. Instead of starting with the same person all the time, can we rotate like we always used to?
We can discuss it in board leadership. I like that idea. I understand that, given the system, the board docs system, it's easier to go through the way that they have it programmed.
Yes, so we can look at the board docs program. I know that it is set up with, is it for every single vote? Goes down the road. We can, if we know ahead, but it's better to, per meeting, we could change it. Would that be better if we did it per meeting? Would that be an option?
It was always done per vote. And that we can alter it.
I know when I was here before, it had been, but I think it was a board docs change.
The best we could do is per meeting, change the order. To keep changing it per vote, they'd have to reprogram it each time they get ready to vote. And that means you'd have to stop and redo it. And I understand the pass, but the system we're in would support changing the order per meeting, because we can set it up before we come in.
Mr. Brophy?
Okay, I had a question earlier, and then this week, and then we get a chance to really explain it. It was about the phone system purchase. Now, I'm not against the phone purchase. The system purchase, I would imagine previous board norming through all the property ready to get that, so that's fine. But what I did question is, it looks to me like it was part of the consent agenda issue, and some of it for about $350,000 should probably be a standalone, and be put out by itself. I'm just wondering what the, you know, what the criteria is dollar-wise before we start to say something's a standalone versus a bundle.
There is none. Consent agenda is not driven by a dollar value, but that is something that an individual board can address. But, and that's why I included the description from PSBA about consent agenda. This is probably not the best example to use, but to your question, that's a topic for the board to decide if there's monetary value associated with consent agenda. The quirkiness about this one was because it was unanimously recommended to go forward as part of the consent on the November 26 vote, so it was actually a board action forwarding it that way. So this was a little quirky. Your question beyond that is something the board leadership has to discuss if they want to pursue that and give us direction based on a dollar value, because that's not normally like something established, it's a local decision.
It's just that when I see something of that value in a bundled package, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that. I would rather vote on that on an individual basis and not have it lumped in.
Well, one of the things, if, and I don't know if you had a chance to read the email, I put on the end of that, even if it's on the consent agenda, a board member can request it be moved to itemize. So I did include that, I don't know if you had a chance to see it. It tells you that that can be done. Obviously, we, I spent more time trying to explain this one because it's a little quirky one. We've already committed, and that was the reason, yeah. But going forward, even if it is on consent and you're uncomfortable, you have the ability prior to the meeting, starting to request, and it has happened, something be moved from it.
That's great, thank you very much. Is there a form or something to fill out or something? Or just make a phone call?
It's obviously best in the front end, like you questioned this, the no-surprise rule. So you can simply just reach out, email, phone call. But email would probably be good for myself and the board chair to be aware. Both of us, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then if it's a committee, well, it wouldn't be an issue committee.
Do we have any other board comment? All right, then I will move to upcoming meeting dates. So all of our meetings are posted on the district calendar on our website. We have two committee meetings, or sorry, we have one committee meeting on the 17th at 7:00 PM, and then we have upcoming committee... And then we have upcoming committee meetings on the 7th and 14th of January. That is all for our upcoming meetings at this time. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Hogan moves, and Nyman seconds. We are adjourned.